Led by Commissioner Lee, if you will please stand or remain standing for the pledge.
Let's pray. Holy God, we just come before you this morning, we give you praise and praise for all that you are and all that you do. We thank you for all of our blessings, the ones we see and the ones we don't see. God, we just ask that you open up our eyes so that we can see everything that you have for us because we are.
Holy God, we lift up this new school year as students return to school and teachers and principals and janitors and administrators and everyone. God, that you would create an environment that is fun and that is safe and an environment where these children can learn and become well-educated adults. God, that it's not a place where they have fear. And so, God, we just lift that up to you, that it would be a great school year. We lift up our, our police officers and our EMTs as they go out to do their work in the day. God, that you would be with them and that you would protect them and give them wisdom beyond their normal wisdom, that you would give them your wisdom, your insight, so that they see things, so that they can return to their homes safely this evening. And God, we just lift up this meeting and all the people that volunteer and are here to provide for your community. God, that as the agenda unrolls, that you would be with them, that you would provide compassion and patience, that is in this long agenda today. But that you would be with each one of them. Holy God, your scripture says, "If we ask, that you will not only give us wisdom, but that you will lavish us with wisdom." So this morning, we're asking, lavish us with wisdom to make good decisions. We ask this in your son's precious name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Face flag, attention.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with no end, ever and ever.
All right, we'll get started this morning with our public comments, and we do have a couple of people that have signed in. We'll start off with Ms. Jennifer Davidson with our Extension Office in Russell County. Ms. Davidson?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Well, I'm honored and pleased to be able to serve as your county director for Alabama Cooperative Extension. So I just wanted to take a few minutes today and say thank you for our support from our county commission and just kind of let you know a little bit about what we've done in the last year and then let you know a little about what we're gonna do next year. As you all know, we have three major program areas. We work in the area of Ag and Natural Resources, we work in human sciences, and we also provide 4H youth development for our county. Within A and R, we work with general row crop agriculture producers, we work with horticulture landscapers, homeowners. We always joke and say, "If anybody's around the county courthouse with a dead tomato, they're probably looking for me." The forestry and natural resources folks in our county, we work with pond management, and then we also work with our animal science folks. We're the flow-through for all of the soil testing, water testing that goes through Auburn University. And sometimes we have chicken manure and that sort of thing, too. So all of the testing that we do through our labs with Auburn comes through us. We do a lot of different workshops throughout the year, so I'd encourage you and anyone in the general public, if you'd like to be included on our mailing list, to just call our office at 334-298-6845 and get on our MailChimp newsletter. We also advertise these through our local newspaper and then also we can, if you do Facebook or social media, you can follow us on that. This last year, though, we did a residential pecan workshop. We do the library luncheon learns as well as the CBCC luncheon learns, as well as all of our other intact partner groups like Rotary Club and Exchange Club and those type places. We also do the Food Entrepreneur Conference, we do an annual forestry program. Every year, usually our partners at Auburn will reach out and we do some sort of book program or literacy program. And last year, it focused on the mural at the old post office, and thank you to those who attended that. We've also partnered with Rus- Phoenix City Housing, and we provide a lot of educational program to the Phoenix City Housing residents. We've also provided educational credit hours for teachers, PLTs for Exploring Nature Through Art Program was last spring, and we had that for our schoolteachers. We run the Russell County Farmers Market, which meets up at Garrett Harrison Stadium throughout the growing season. We have the Master Gardener Program, and in fact, we're running that right now. When those citizens take that course, they promise to give back 50 hours of community service. And one of our areas that we work in is in Fort Mitchell, so we work really closely with Miss Dale, and we're looking to do some more projects down there. We also run the annual Farm City Program, and in fact, we're about to have our Farm City Season. So we'll be back here in November to get our proclamation read, and then we'll have our event where we give out the kids' awards for that. We manage the Arbor Day Program where we give out free tree seedlings every February. And then, we already know that we'll be having, I wanted everybody to know, we're having our annual forestry event at the Seale Courthouse on October 23rd, so mark your calendars for that if you're interested. Our human sciences program focuses on serve safe, so we do a lot of our serve safe trainings. And then we also have nutrition education for low-income families, and we provide those with our community partners throughout the year. We have SNAP Ed, and then we also do financial management and financial literacy workshops all throughout the county and as well in the school system. We work with our senior centers to do diabetes control and chronic disease management classes. And then we have one that they really love, and it's called Masters of Memory, and boy, I need that regularly. We also go into the schools as well as the alternative schools, and we provide Escape Vape, which is a vaping cessation program. And then we also do breastfeeding-friendly education for our daycare providers. For 4H, we are one of the largest 4H producers, we have the largest enrollment in the state, one of the top ones in the state. And we see all of the 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, 9th, and some of the 12th graders in the in-school groups. And we want to thank so much Russell County School District and Phoenix City Schools for always being a ready partner and allowing us in the schools to do that. We also have after-school clubs, we take them to summer camp, we have day camp programs that we provide at our office. And then throughout the school year, we have monthly community clubs, so we pretty much meet every Tuesday night throughout the school year. And we focus on a variety of pro- a variety of curriculum for those clubs. We have competitive events, and we've had some kids who've done well in the last couple of years in several different competitive events. We have animal clubs where we focus on poultry and rabbits, but this year, we're going to be offering the goat program. So if anyone would like to learn or has a child who would like to learn how to show a goat, this is something that we're offering new this year. So contact us and we'll give you more information. And then we just really want to thank all of our partners, particularly the Russell County Commission, because without your support, we couldn't do any of this work in our county. And we just really want to thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions?
I'm not too old to go to camp.
We need male chaperones terribly bad. We really need our guys to step up and take our kids to camp. Of course, our camp is a, is a geological anomaly, everywhere you go is uphill for some reason.
And cell phones don't work there.
Cell phones don't work, it's, but it's a delightful camp, and we certainly do need more chaperones to go with us.
I want to go for the food.
The food is good.
All right, any other questions, Ms. Jennifer? Thank you, Ms. Jennifer, for being here today and presenting to the commission. It's always great to hear the updates. And we'll see you this afternoon for sure. All right. We also have Ms. Carmen Evans with a prayer walk. Ms. Evans?
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Carmen Evans with Tri-City Prayer Initiative, and we want to say thank you for allowing us the last two years to convene here on the corner of Dillingham and Broad. And we essentially overflow into the parking lot, we park in this area. We had 200 people last year for the prayer walk, and we're gonna be back again this year. Essentially, we're here to say or ask, "Is that good? Is that okay?" Because we'll be meeting once again, convening right here in this area. So that's Saturday, October 18th. We start at 9:00 a.m., we're out of here by 11:30 or 12:00. And if approval's given, we also want to include everyone, all the churches, to join along with us for the prayer walk. That starts here, goes across the Dillingham Street Bridge. We have security, and Mayor Eddie Lowe has come out the last two years to give us the kickoff. And then we go around the Government Center, come back, and we have different points that we pray for our cities. It's called Tri-City because it includes Fort Benning along with Columbus and Phoenix City, Alabama.
All right, I think as long as we don't have any maintenance going on, we don't have anything, Leon. All right, very good. All right, thanks for letting us know about that. We should make sure we didn't have a bunch of trucks and cranes.
I know, that happened one year, so.
Yes, ma'am.
But it worked out. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on. No more public comments, anybody missed that, missed the sign-up sheet? All right. Well, thanks to everyone for being here today, especially our IT department for getting everything lined up in our Facebook Live that is out there for the citizens. Also, the Citizens of East Alabama for covering our meetings and obviously putting it on cable and internet as well. Their fearless leader is here today, we'll hear from them a little bit down in the agenda, so. Again, welcome to the elected officials and other department heads and our guests that are here today. So we're gonna start by establishing a quorum by calling a roll of the commission, Ms. Wright?
Yes, sir, District 3 Costello.
Here.
District 4 Reed.
Here.
District 1 Lee.
Present.
District 2 Chambers.
Here.
District 5 Dougherty.
Here.
District 7 Screws.
Here.
District 6 Corbin.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am, and we also have our attorney, Ms. Hope Hicks, with us today, thank you. Commissioners, as you know, the agenda that was approved at the work session on Monday night, August the 11th, and that is the agenda you have in front of you, which one we will be working off of today. First up, we have, under Proclamations, Resolutions, we have a presentation, the Employee of the Month and Employee Service Awards. Ms. Wright?
Yes, sir, Commissioners, this is one of our highlights each month where we recognize our Employee of the Month as well as our employees based on years of service. Our Employee of the Month this month, for the month of August, is Ms. Patricia Hartman with the Coroner's Office. She's the Chief Deputy Coroner. She has been selected because of her ongoing support of the Coroner's Office and a sense of community engagement. She has worked previously in different positions since starting with the county in 2018. Congratulations, Ms. Hartman.
She's not here.
Anybody except on her behalf?
All right.
She called out sick.
All right, next we recognize our employees who are serving for 10 years with the county. First, we will recognize Mr. Jermaine Shea. He's the Engineering Tech 2 with the Highway Department. Congratulations, Jermaine. We have a couple more, we have.
I maybe have one.
Yeah, one more. Next is for 15 years of service, Mr. Grady Simmons. He's the Equipment Operator 3, also for the Highway Engineering Department. Congratulations. Yes, so we did have one that we will recognize, he's not with us today, that's Mr. Lieutenant Billy Jones with the Sheriff's Department. We have him recognized for 10 years, there was a correction, he's actually been here for 11, so, but he's not here with us today.
Sorry, my mic was off. Thank you, ma'am, I know that he had an important meeting he had to be at, and we want to recognize Lieutenant Jones as well. I did skip over approval of the minutes, so I'm gonna step back to that just a second and approve or entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the July 23, 2025 commission meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second, my Commissioner Dougherty, second to my Commissioner Reed. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? That is approved. Sometimes I get to checking these off too quick, so. Next up, we have a resolution and a participation in Alabama inter-local mutual aid agreement. Our EMA Director, David Martin?
Good morning, Commissioners Chair. This is an agreement, a mutual aid agreement for Alabama, inter-local mutual aid agreement. This resolution enables Russell County to both request and provide aid during emergencies in cooperation with other entities in Alabama. That's requesting the chair to sign.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second to motion.
My Commissioner Screws, second to my Commissioner Dougherty, any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That is approved, thank you, David. Next up, we have a proclamation, possibly for Mr. Richard Sellers. Commissioners, I've laid the, some information on your tables for you. I would like today to approve a resolution, a proclamation, for Mr. Richard Sellers, who recently passed away. Mr. Sellers did 17 years with Russell County in numerous positions to include building inspections and maintenance, and just did some great work, some of what we see every day when we go around this county. So the permission today is to approve the proclamation, and then at the next meeting, we will attempt to present that to the family.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion, my Commissioner Lee, second to my Commissioner Reed, any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? That is approved, thank you so much, and we'll have that ready for the next meeting. All right, we want to discussion items. The first one is a, an update from our Beam, our partners with Wi-Fi throughout the county. I'm gonna ask Mr. Mal to step forward real quick with his team and give us that update.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We're grateful to be here.
We gotta use it for your T, for your screaming channel, so I'm sorry. I thought you were gonna let him talk, sorry.
Your viewers will be fussing, they couldn't hear us if we don't use it.
Gotcha. Glad to be here. We started this project to deliver broadband to everybody in Russell County in October of 2022. That's when we started doing that, and it's about 350 miles that we pulled a fiber so far, and that puts us at about 85% complete. So that's kind of the punchline. I'm gonna let these guys go through all the details, and we can talk about where we're gonna finish out for the rest of the year. We think by the end of the year, we'll be complete 100%. So they're gonna put them, put the presentation up here and, and look at the map, and if y'all have any questions about where we haven't gone or any addresses come up, we can, we can cover that. But we, we're glad to be here, and thank you. And I'm gonna turn it over to our engineers, this is, y'all know these guys probably, they've been in here. Michael Holt. Justin Hurst, these are our engineers that mapped this whole thing out, made it happen, so, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, go through this slide, give y'all an update on where we're at, progress we're making, timelines on where we plan on finishing. See, as Mr. Mal said, Beam's run 350 miles, strand fiber and conduit. We've activated 12 new hub sites across the county, ranging all the way to the Barber County line, all the way back up to Lee County line. BW Caps area, Marvin. Back out Sanford Road, now Walker Road, Hertzboro, Hatchetchaby. We're kind of all over the map now in Russell County. Work has begun on the last hub site location at Glenville Highway. So we're down to our last hub site and taking the next steps to get everything activated.
Yeah, so one of our goals this year is to finish our ring project throughout Russell County. I believe we've talked to y'all about that before when we came in here, but this ring project is something that we're very excited about at Beam. We understand, obviously, that outages happen. One of our goals with this is to decrease the amount of time it takes for us to restore those. And so what this ring project will do is typically, if you get a fiber cut, everything past that fiber, we have to go out and fix it. And whilst that's still the case, what this ring project allows us to do is, once we have this ring 100% complete, we'll be able to reroute the traffic anywhere in Russell County to these different other hub site locations, which means for customers and businesses, they have zero downtime. While we can go and fix the broke fiber, the cut fiber, the customers do not see any outage time along that. The other thing that this ring project does for us is it's a 100-gig ring going across the entire county. We have the ability to upgrade that to a 400-gig ring anytime we see fit. What that means is 100 gigs is feeding each and every one of these hub sites. So each and every customer off this hub site, they're getting 100 gigs coming into it. So as Russell County grows, as the amount of homes grow, the amount of businesses that come in, we have the ability to offer faster-than-gigabit speeds to these businesses and these homes in the future.
All right, so this is what we have left and what we're under construction and where we plan to go by the end of next year, as our completion date is end of 2026. So everybody in Russell County have the opportunity to get Beam Internet. These are the areas left to complete in Russell County. The polygons in green are currently under construction. The yellow has not been started, but we plan on being finished with this, this year. The blue are the ones left for next year, 2026, which is fairly small areas. We just have to do some engineering to make sure everything is gonna surpass and be great for the future. We don't want to just temporarily something out and have to go back. So it's taken us a little longer than a few of these pockets. A lot of rural dirt roads that we're gonna have to go down in the Battle Road community, I'm sorry, Bethel Road community. Battle Road, we just finished it, matter of fact. Bethel Road, Glenville, Glenville Highway, we're working on that right now currently. So plan on getting to your church, Mr. Screws. Yes, sir. We're coming, we're coming. See what we got left, there we go.
So just project overview, we're still on target for that estimating 8 million on the total project cost. We're looking at passing 2,000-plus homes by the end of this project. Again, like I said earlier, fully redundant fiber ring throughout Russell County. We'll have the ability to offer fiber services, not just to residential, but any business that comes into the county. And like I said earlier, it's a plant that's ready to grow and it speeds to meet the needs of businesses and residences in the future to come. And to add to that, we wanted to kind of share some things with y'all from my side and Michael's side that we're looking at doing in the future. This is not where Beam is stopping. Our goal is to finish this fiber project, we want to get fiber to all these rural homes in Russell County, but that is not where we're ending. Some of the exciting things that we have coming up is, I'm sure some of y'all have seen, but we've started offering Arlo services to all of our customers. That's security cameras for your home to see inside, outside of your home, to know what's going on in your home. Something that we're excited to announce that we're gonna kick off in this month is Beam has partnered with Bark. And I'm not sure if y'all have seen what Bark is, but it's a fantastic app that goes on your cell phones, and it is for your children. If you've seen Life 360, it's similar to Life 360, to where you'll know where your kids are at any given time using their cellphone. But one of the things that Bark offers that a lot of other apps doesn't or don't is it gives you the ability to safely track incoming messages for your kids, to know what they're doing online, to know if there's any harmful messages coming to your kids such as text, or if they're getting threats online, bullying, all of those things. So we're getting ready to roll that out in August for all of the families, not just in Russell County, but for everybody that we serve. And Michael has a couple of exciting things from the plant side as well.
All right, yeah, something very exciting Justin and I've been working on for a while. I don't know if y'all noticed, all the new fiber coming down Highway 431 is Alabama Fiber Network. We just currently partnered with them beginning of the week, actually. So what they offer differently than what we have now is they get, they give us three different routes coming in from different data centers, so up to 400 gigs. So if we lose a switch coming from Atlanta, we can pick up in Tennessee. So they have several diverse opportunities for us, and we're working with them tightly on that, get that up and running here shortly. So we're very excited about that. They have a lot of brand-new cool technology that's gonna help us be able to grow and branch out and offer more to our customers as well. Also on our coax side, so everybody that doesn't have your fiber, coax is, there's technology out there now that could get you to 10 gigs on the back of a coax cable modem. So give us time, we're working our way that way. Now, you're looking at symmetrical speeds, 1.5 gigs up and down, once we get this going. So it's fiber-like speeds over coax. There's so much coax in the world, it can never go away in a timely manner, so you have all these scientists and all working on this to get us to that next, next step. So we're testing now, and we're excited about it. I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna be great for us and everybody in Russell County. Any questions?
TV monitor, I mean on your home monitoring, you all will, will serve that as for, you know, like, right now I pay a service.
Yes, sir.
For somebody to monitor. Will it come through you all, or I still have to pay that service?
It's not a monitoring, it's actually for you to monitor. It's not like an ADT-type system, but you would get pictures from, to your cellphone off of these wireless devices. So if somebody walks in front of it, ding, and go off and you just look at your picture, see who's there. So that's how that works. It's not a security system, per se. I use it in my home for security, but I mean, it has several different cool options where you could set alarms on it, and if somebody walks up, it'd go off with an alarm, it'd sound like a sirens, so.
Okay, what do you want to ask?
Yes, sir.
The system I have now, if something happened, they call the share.
Yes, sir.
You don't have that, right?
No, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, this is more cameras than it is the alarm, actually.
Yes, sir.
All right, I want to, I want to say, take the opportunity to say, we appreciate the partnership. When Mal first brought this to me, I thought he, thought this was crazy, but it actually worked, and it's working. One of the best things we can do as a commissioner, I, I don't like telling people no, and I like trying to find solutions. And I can't tell you how many calls I've received or in a, in a meeting somewhere where somebody would say, "I don't have internet available at my house." And then I call Michael or one of, and say, "Hey, can you check this address?" And the next day, they're hooking these people up with high-speed internet. That is, that has happened probably 10 times.
One big thing for us, I forgot to mention AFN, that gets us back to the school supercomputer as well and the data center in Auburn. So we could work with all our school systems, and if y'all can help us with that, Phoenix City. Let's work with that and you guys in Russell County.
Yep.
Give us all better service.
And I'd like to also add that it's been a great partnership. I, I love the fact that the redundancy that's built in. I remember a time when we would have a, a weather incident and a, and a line going to, on 26 going to Hatchetchaby and Hertzboro, and they were out. There was nothing that's gonna happen until the tree got removed and, and somebody got out there and fixed that one wire. So I like the fact that it's gonna be attacked from different, different, like a spider web almost to where that these companies and businesses can keep going, so.
That's right, and it keeps, I mean, if your line in your yard gets cut, don't take us wrong, that's, that's gonna happen, and we can't help that. But for your larger areas, it's gonna cut our outage pockets down to such a small, small, small spot to where we have a power outage or a tree fall. Termination lines, you know, you just, there's nothing you can redundant on that, per se. But our larger areas, it's gonna cut it down tremendously.
And like Chance said, I think that, that a lot of the houses that believe they don't have internet access.
Yes, sir.
They do, they just haven't checked, because this has been going so quickly that you guys have implemented right by people's houses, and they don't even know it yet.
Please call us, and we have a cancer page that we go through every day, and we get 30 to 40 cancers that are, people are asking for service. And a lot aren't aware, and we've been there for five or six years. So, yeah, please call.
Well, I like to say I'm enjoying my service.
Thank you, good. That was, that was a tough one.
That is amazing, because when we started this, Commissioner Screws was really in doubt in how he has served, that's, that's an amazing feat right there. He lives pretty far in the county. Thank y'all so much, we really appreciate it, thank you. I will tell you that when we have different events, and we had a conference recently where we talked about this, and we brag about that partnership, because I really think this was one of the, we had several uses, but one of the best uses of our ARPA funds that we did in this county, because it was a real need for our citizens, so, thank y'all again. Commissioners, if you will, we had Ms. Hartman from the Coroner's Office did arrive just a little bit late, so if you don't mind, just let us, let her come in and do the presentation with her. Ms. Wright, if you'll start over with her part?
I will. This month, Employees of the Month is Ms. Patricia Hartman, Chief Deputy Coroner for the Coroner's Office. Ms. Hartman has been with the county since 2018, and because of her outgoing support of the Coroner Office and sense of engagement. of her outgoing support of the Coroner Office and sense of engagement, she's this month Employee of the Month. Congratulations, Ms. Hartman.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to business items. The first one under business items is the Mental Health Board Open Positions. Commissioners, uh, as I presented on Monday night, we have three appointees for the East Alabama Mental Health Board. The three that we currently have are Mr. Jesse Gideon, Mr. Jeff Gibson, and Ms. Jeanne Jenkins. All three are Russell County residents and, uh, unfortunately, two of them, uh, have missed several meetings and said that their, their lives just will not allow them right now, their schedules will not allow them to make the meetings and have asked to be taken off and be replaced. And I am bringing forward this morning two names to replace, miss, one to replace Mr. Jesse Gideon and one to replace Ms. Jeanne Jenkins. Um, that is Judge Melinda Strickland, our probate judge, and Mr. Rick Chancy, our district attorney. I entertain a motion to approve those appointments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Let's, uh, let's have some discussion. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Reed.
I'm gonna tell you now, once we point these peoples on the board now, if they're not making a meeting, you'll be right back up there and we'll be going to take you off because it's not fair for other people to go to the meeting and they don't even have a quorum. I hate to say that. I served 12 years on the mental health and I never missed a meet. And I'm gonna tell you something, once you get on the board, you automatically on the executive board. The executive board meet one time a month. So you need to know this now before you get on the board now.
All right, Mr. Reed, I had, had this conversation with, with our judge and our DA and both have shown a very big interest in being on this board. So I have no doubt they will do a great job for us and, and if they decide that they are not able to, I'm sure they can come back to us and we'll find somebody can. But I have no doubt they will, so, all right.
Check on the.
Yes.
That's what I was gonna ask.
So we did check. There was a note on, in our books that there had, that one of the resident, one had to be a, a resident of the Hertzboro area. That was just a suggestion. It was not. And because we are putting two elected officials that are countywide on this board, I think they more than represent the Hertzboro area as well. So, all right.
All right.
Any other discussion or comments, questions? All right. Um, I have a motion by Commissioner Chambers and a second by Commissioner Darty, I believe. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that is approved. Thank you. Thank you, Judge. Next up, we have the, uh, financial policy, a second reading, which will require action after the second reading. Ms. Wright?
Yes, yes, sir. Good morning, commissioners. I will be reading for the second time the financial policy. The purpose of this document is to service an all-incompassing financial management policy for Russell County, Alabama, which will provide direction for the Russell County Commission in budgeting, reserve balance, debt management, accounting, auditing, and financial reporting practices. The county commission prepares an annual budget for each fiscal year for the county. The county commission is required to adopt the annual budget no later than September 30th of each year. Debt levels and related annual debt services expenditures are important long-term obligations that must be managed with available short and long-term resources. The Russell County Commission believes that sound financial management requires that sufficient funds be maintained by the county for unanticipated ex, expenditures and revenue shortfalls during the fiscal year as may be caused by economic downturns in local, state, and federal levels, natural disasters, and other unforeseen circumstances. Maintaining such fun, funds will help support the stability of the county's finances and reduce the need for short-term borrowing. The county's commission's objective is to for a minimum of six months of operating expenses for the annual budget less capital for the main two operational funds, general and highway, to be set aside and reserved for the purpose stated above. The use of the reserve fund balances will require an adopted county commission resolution specifying the amount to be allocated from the respective reserve along with the reason identified in the pur, purpose section above. During the annual budget, the reserve fund balance will review for the adequacy of meeting the objective of this policy. The purpose of the capital improvement fund policy is to establish and maintain dedicated funds to be annually budgeted, funded, and used for new facilities and facility improvement. The purpose of the accounting, auditing, and financial reporting policy is to establish and maintain high standards for accounting practices in the county, thereby enable the county commission, the county administrator, and the assistant county administrator, finance director, to make sound decisions in preparing and adopting the county budget and managing the county finances. The finance, the finance director shall maintain and ensure compliance with all continuing disclosure requirements as provided by the county's outstanding debt obligations. This concludes the second reading of the financial policy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lee, second by Commissioner Chambers. This is to approve this after the second reading. Any discussion?
I'm just glad it didn't take longer than 33 years to get this in writing because we've been trying to do it for a long time.
Well, kudos to our administrator and Ms., Ms. Thomas and others that worked on this attorney that, so we really appreciate y'all bringing this to us and getting it done. So, any other comments or questions?
Will, will you show that, uh, fund in, in our budget each year, what we have in the reserve?
Yes, sir. I'm bringing that to you, Ms. September.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right. We have a motion and a second. And all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That is approved. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wright. Next up, we have the request to accept bids for the labor, the elevator modernization at the Judicial Center. Mr. Watson?
Uh, good morning, Commissioner Chairman. Uh, maintenance is requesting to, uh, that the commission approves solicit the bids for the labor and installation of equipments being purchased for the elevator at the Judicial Center. Uh, if so approved today, we would start next month running the ad from 9:4, 9:11, 9:18. Uh, have a pre-bid meeting on-site at the Judicial Center, uh, on 9/16, 2025. Uh, we would end all bids 9/26 and then open bids here in the Commission Chambers on 9/26 and then tentatively award, uh, on the meeting around 10/8.
All right. You have the recommendation of our maintenance director. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Darty. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chambers. Any other discussion, questions of our maintenance director? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Thank you, Leon, for staying on this and getting that elevator back up and running for Judge Johnson and the other judges and, um, staying on top of it, getting it right. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a transfer request for the sheriff's office in the jail. Sheriff Taylor.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. We, um, are asking to transfer 29,000 from line item 304 in the sheriff's office budget to line item 214. Also, transfer 40,000 from line item 304 in the jail budget to line item 214. Both of these transfers, both in the sheriff's office and the jail, are due to Windows 10 computers, uh, ending in October and these, this purchase will be for the new computers.
All right.
Motion to approve. Second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Reed, second by Commissioner Darty. Any other questions of the sheriff or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That is approved, Sheriff. Thanks. Next up, we have, um, the new bank account for tourism. Ms. Wright?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, um, currently the tourism funds are being deposited into the general fund. Um, I'm recommending that myself along with the chair be allowed to open additional account at Phoenix River Bank to transfer those funds into, so they're no longer counted in the general fund.
Motion to approve. I second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lee, second by Commissioner Darty. Any discussion or comments?
Well, we have a tourism budget.
You read my mind. I literally was gonna say that before I opened it up. Um, the plan is to have it at the next work session for you to review as well with the, the final department budgets.
Okay. Thank you. Will it be in the budget from this point on every year?
Yes. Yeah, the plan is, uh, we were working on some different things with some different vendors and we, we had to get that honed in right. It's a reason it wasn't in the books itself, but it will be at the next meeting. Yep. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That is approved. Next up is the allocation of projects. Commissioner Lee?
Uh, yes. Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, in the form of a motion, allocate 2,500 of my project funds to the friends of the library, uh, and also 2,500 to the Art Council of Phoenix City.
All right. You have a motion by Commissioner Lee?
I second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Reed. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That is approved, Commissioner. Next up, under county engineer, uh, first item is the presentation of the transportation plan for FY '26. Sean?
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, yes, as a part of the rebuilt Alabama gas law, uh, by August 31st of each year, we have to get adopted a transportation plan. So following will be a list of the roads we're planning on doing in our fiscal year 2026 transportation plan. Uh, Walker Road, 6.06 miles, Bethel Road, 4.12 miles, Hooks Road, .71 miles on one end and one mile on the other end. Uh, County Line Road, .72 miles, Cottown Road, 1.3 miles, Kirkland Road, 1.66 miles, Will Avenue, .23 miles, Cricket Court, .19 miles, Cricket Drive, .30 miles, Farm Road, .49 miles, Flannoy Road, 1.61 miles, and Cardon Road, 2.5 miles, for a total of 20.99 miles and, uh, roughly $2.8 million. And this is for our rebuild and our federal aid exchange funds.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Screws.
Second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Darty. Any discussion or questions to Sean? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, Sean, that is approved. Move on to award the rebids for the annual bids.
Uh, yes, sir. We opened bids here Thursday, uh, last Thursday, August 8th, the Commission Chambers. Uh, I'd be recommending to award, uh, bid number 00525 grassing and mulching to Parker Grassing Company. Um, bid number 01024, our motor grader blades, split them between Thompson Cat and Tractor and Equipment Company. And then bid number 015-25 right-of-way mo, uh, grass mowing approximately 138 acres to, uh, Parker Grassing Company.
Motion to approve. Second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lee, second by Commissioner Darty. Is there any discussion or comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That is approved.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Uh, yes, sir.
Since we don't get books no more, it would be helpful if we got that information on that.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Yeah. What I'm saying, we, we can go down to what he's reading.
Yep.
We don't have the same information he's giving.
All right, very good. So if we could work on that, since we've transitioned, uh, this is, we're still in the process of learning these, but if we can transition all of the information that we can get, like the list of the roads that you've given us here, Heidi can get those into the system as well, so we can pull them up and see them, that would be very helpful. Okay? Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Next, under the administrator, um, the first one is Russell County Extension Office Luncheon and Meeting.
Yes, this is just a reminder, commissioners, that today at 11:30, we're having lunch at the Extension Office for their annual report and appreciation luncheon.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. And then we have the, uh, annual conference as well.
It's just a reminder that the ACCA conference starts next Tuesday in Orange Beach.
All right. And this year, it did not fall on a meeting date, so we did not have to cancel a meeting or anything. So very good. All right. We'll move on to the attorneys portion. Um, Madam Attorney?
Yes, good morning, Commissioner's Chair. Um, I'm requesting that we go into executive session today following the meeting. I do not anticipate that the commission will need to take any action, so you could finish with the announcements, adjourn into executive session, and then adjourn from that meeting.
Motion to approve.
Wait, wait, wait.
Yep.
I gotta, I gotta make my declarations. Hang on, guys. The purpose of the executive session will be to discuss the general reputation, character, physical condition, professional competence of an employee, to discuss the, or hear about complaints brought against a public employee, or to discuss legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation, controversies not yet being litigated but eminently likely to be litigated if a governmental body pursues a proposed course of action. And as an attorney licensed to practice law in Alabama, I would state that this is an exception to the Open Meetings Act that is applicable to the planned discussion.
Now, I will make the motion that we go into a jack, executive session and adjourn from executive session. And I second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lee, and second by Commissioner Reed. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that is approved. We will be in executive session as soon as we read these announcements. First off, is there any other discussion, uh, items from the commissioners that were not on the agenda today that you need to bring forward?
Are we gonna look at the, uh, chair during the evaluation process?
We have that on the next agenda for the next work session. Yes, sir. Um, the only other thing I wanted to mention is the schools are back in. Please be careful in the roads. Um, we've already seen pictures on, on social media of people running, uh, the stop bars on the school buses. And, uh, I just want to say thank you to all our teachers that are back in school today and, and the students for getting in there and doing so much better. And those of us that have got kids that have already gone on and are in college and everything else, it's, uh, it just, life changes every day. So thanks to all those teachers that are making it happen. So, all right. Under announcements, we have Crawford Market Days this Saturday, August 16th. Um, again, this is the third Saturday of each month and that will run through November. Um, that is 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM Eastern Time at the Crawford Square Walking Trail. Then we have a, a Labor Day closure of the government, all the government buildings where we close on Labor Day, which is September 1st, 2025. And we're welcoming everyone to come again to the SEAL or the Russell County Courthouse in SEAL Labor Day Fair, a vendor fair that happens every year and has been going on for many years. That will be on Monday, September 1st, Labor Day, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM Eastern Time. Great food and great vendors. Please come out and enjoy that time. And a reminder, we did not only use some tourism funds for that, uh, but we also received a state tourism grant from Senator Beasley to help with that event as well. So, uh, last is a drill, which we will hold, a shelter-in-place drill here at the courthouse on Thursday, September 18th. Therefore, we are posting and announcing that, uh, all the offices in the courthouse will close at 4:30 PM to allow those employees to be able to participate in that and not scare the public. Any other comments or announcements that we missed today?
Is the probate judge's courtroom available? Yeah.
All right, we will.
Sometimes we don't check.
We are now in executive session and, uh, we will be adjourning from that executive session. We are over.